We're going to bring the meeting back to order. All right, welcome to the Queen Anne's County Commissioners Meeting. This is a public meeting that is being aired live on our local cable television station, QACTV seven. These media broadcasts provide county citizens an opportunity to watch and review our scheduled public meetings. In addition to our live audience this evening, we are providing remote options for citizens to watch and participate in county commissioner meetings. Citizens may watch our meeting live on our website at QAC.org/live or on our television channel, Breeze Line Channel seven and High Definition Channel five oh seven. Citizens may also participate by joining the live Zoom meeting by going to QAC.org-publiccomment. Citizens may also email comments to publiccomment@QAC.org. Comments received this evening will be summarized during the press and public comment period on tonight's agenda. We acknowledge your participation and by attending, you've acknowledged that this session is both recorded and aired. Press and public comment will be taken and is limited to three minutes per person. If you do care to speak, please sign up at the information table in our lobby. Comments longer than three minutes can and should be submitted to the commissioners in writing for their review. We will now stand and be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Commission President Jim Moran.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you could remain standing for a moment of silence. Last week, Queen Anne's County lost a pillar of the community, Tommy Davis, a husband, a father, a grandfather, and a, as I said, a pillar of the community. You will be missed, Tommy. Thank you very much.
Commissioners, that brings us to the approval of our agenda for tonight's meeting, January ninth. So our meeting, agenda for tonight's meeting, along with the regular session minutes, the closed session minutes, and the sanitary commission minutes from the December twelfth meeting have all been circulated for review. Do we have any additions or corrections?
Approval or motion to approve the agenda and minutes as submitted.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Commissioners? So we just had a closed session under the general provisions article sections three, three oh five B three to discuss land acquisition and article three, three oh five B one to discuss boards and commissions and personnel. And I believe we have a couple appointments to make this evening.
Yeah, want to make a motion to appoint to the council for children and youth Melinda Ray, Leanne Rhodes, and Julie Valicello for a term begin, for three-year term beginning on one, one of twenty-four.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved. Oh, for the public, Patrick McLaughlin, one of our commissioners, is not feeling well. He's at home, he's on Zoom, and Chris Corcorino is out on business somewhere in the Midwest. So it's the three of, the four of us tonight.
Okay. Yes, I want to make a motion to install Jennifer Nowak as the Chair of the Animal Control Commission.
Second.
Any discussion on this item? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
So moved.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Okay, that brings us to our first press and public comment period. I believe we do have some folks that signed up, so we appreciate all citizens for taking time to express your views to the county commissioners. Comments are limited, limited to three minutes per person. Comments longer than three minutes can be submitted in writing. This commission respects your desire and right to convey your message freely. When you come forward, please speak clearly at the standing microphone, state your name, your address, and your topic of interest. And in keeping, keeping with the dignity of our office, we ask that all views be expressed in a respectful and civil manner.
First one up is Frank DeGugliardo. I know I'm butchering that, my apologies.
Would you mind pronouncing it correctly for us?
Sure. Frank DeGugliardo. And I'm here representing Corsica Conservancy this evening and to address the wastewater treatment plan issues on your agenda for decision. You know, of course, we, we've shared other comments with you previous to this, but I wanted to hit some of the highlights again on this for yourselves and for the public. CRC asks that you not approve the town's proposed text amendment to the county water and sewer sanitation plan in its current form. We understand the town's need and responsibility to plan for the replacement of the sewage treatment plant. Our concerns center on the proposed relocation of the discharge point to the upper main stem of the river and the dramatic increase in the volume of effluent that would be released into the fragile shallow water ecosystem, including during the most biologically vulnerable warm and hot months, which are periods of high recreational use as well. It is not in the community's interest to propose this dramatic increase in the amount of effluent discharge in an area of intense public use and visibility and well-documented degraded water quality. The town, along with the county, has made major investments to make this area a beautiful public use asset and attraction. This area is seeing constant growing usage for boating, kayaking, paddle boarding, and fishing, including the town's popular kids' fishing derby, which CRC volunteers have made possible over the years. It is even an official Maryland Water Trail area as well. Beyond these public use issues, we have serious concerns about the potential degradation of the river's ecosystem that we all worked so hard to protect and improve for so many years. The town and county are signatories to the Corsica Watershed Restoration Action Strategy. In that document, both government entities pledged to apply principles of the strategy to work to de-list the river. The widely applauded Corsica RASK led directly to the selection of the Corsica as Maryland's first targeted watershed restoration project in two thousand six. Since then, the restoration project team, called the Implementers, consisting of state, county, town, NGO, citizen scientists, and affiliated organizations, have worked continuously to restore and preserve the Corsica. Along the way, we've tried to make the Corsica restoration a model for other watersheds to follow. In fact, the Maryland government is now moving to re-energize the targeted watershed approach across the state in the face of lagging day-wide progress. Let's not jeopardize the advances that have been made here locally by now adding more nutrient pollution. Please do not accept the proposed text amendment with this presumptive discharge plan. There are too many unknowns about the potential effects of, on this fragile flood-prone tidal area. The county should not be party to a plan without the necessary research to establish its efficacy, and the town should be required to continue to pursue acquisition of an additional spray field or other non-river discharge options. Thank you.
George Foss?
Yes, as you probably know, Breeze Line has dropped WBOC. I'm George Foss, I'm from two oh one Governance Way North in Queenstown, Maryland. As you probably know, Breeze Line has dropped WBOC from its lineup. And as you also know, that's the only reasonable source of news, weather, and sports for the eastern shore. So I'm hoping there's some way that the county can compel or persuade Breeze Line to reinstate WBOC. I put out a message on Nextdoor, and I got a lot of responses that people were very unhappy that they could no longer get that television station. So, and if you can do, would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
So we do have, Ms. Richards, are, would you like to make a public comment via Zoom?
I would, thank you so much. Good evening, I'm Annie Richards, I'm the Orchester River Keeper with Shore Rivers. I'm here to make public comment regarding the text amendment for Centerville's wastewater treatment upgrade. So thank you for the opportunity to provide comments on the proposed text amendment. These comments are submitted on behalf of Shore Rivers and its 2,500 members throughout Maryland's eastern shore. We are a nonprofit organization working to protect and restore the waterways of Maryland's eastern shore for science-based advocacy, restoration, and education. Shore Rivers supports wastewater treatment plants seeking upgrades to their technologies. This maximizes nutrient reductions, which is good for our rivers. We also understand that upgrades in technology almost always go hand in hand with increasing a plant's sewer capacity. At present, Shore Rivers has several concerns about the proposed discharge methods, including the addition of year-round water refuge discharge directly to the Corsica River, as well as the location of the new proposed discharge pipe. The Corsica River is a significantly impaired tributary of the Chester River. On a three-year average, the Corsica's annual health rate, as determined by rigorous routine testing protocols set by the Mid-Atlantic Tributary Assessment Coalition, has only met minimum passing water quality standards thirty-four percent of the time. Environmental advocates like Shore Rivers have been working for decades to see scores improve. Nitrogen and phosphorus levels contribute substantially to the Corsica's poor performance. The 2023 average for nitrogen and phosphorus concentrations at the new proposed location for the plant's refuse outfall was point nine eight nine milligrams per liter and point one four six milligrams per liter respectively. Maryland Department of the Environment's surface discharge permit, which would pertain to this upgrade, will allow for three milligrams per liter nitrogen and point three milligrams of phosphorus for facilities with ENR technology. These limits are more than double detected nutrient concentrations. This new level of pollutants discharged year-round at four hundred and fifty-eight hundred thousand gallons per day without access will further impair water quality in the shallow, smooth, slow-moving body of water and dramatically increase the potential for summer outbursts and deadfolds. Additionally, the new proposed discharge location is based on acceptable nutrient loads prescribed by the Bay Program's TMDL limits. The proposed location will discharge refuse into a section of the river that is three to five feet deep with very small tidal streams. A new discharge location will be less impactful to the Corsica if sited farther downriver where currents flow at faster rates and the river is deeper. Shore Rivers urges the commissioners to amend Centerville's proposed text amendment to require the acquisition of acceptable agricultural fields despite increased costs to provide additional treatment of the increased wastewater refuse through spray irrigation techniques that match the town's current wastewater protocols. We also recommend the commissioners require a study to determine a new discharge location that takes river depth and tidal flow into account in addition to TMDL nutrient loads. Shore Rivers will continue to be an advocate and a resource to the town of Centerville and Man Valley as they work toward this upgrade. We ask that you consider the facts and concerns presented today in my testimony and vote to amend the town's text amendment request to ensure the resulting facility has the least possible impact to the Corsica River. Thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to speak? Seeing none, we'll close press and public comment.
We did have three emails. Did you want to wait until the end for those or read them now?
Are they in this same subject?
Yes, there's one.
Go ahead, go ahead.
About the same, yeah. Okay, so I'll start with the first one is from Mike Goss. Commissioners, I just found out that Breeze Line Cable Services will no longer carry WBOC sixteen TV station. This decision was made without their customers being given notice. As you know, this channel gives citizens of Queen Anne's County local news such as high school sports scores and highlights and community news. I'm hoping you could reach them to convince them to reconsider and return WBOC back to our choices. Again, that was from Mike Goss. Second email is from Nancy Vincent Rodowski from Centerville. Esteemed county commissioners, I ask that you work to particularly engage residents who live along the Corsica River in discussions about the proposed outfall of the wastewater treatment plant into the Corsica. Also, please alert these residents as information becomes available, including any decisions or rulings by the Maryland Department of the Environment. Thank you for your consideration. That was Nancy Rodowski. And our final email is from Teresa Erhardt of Shrewsbury Farm, and she also has some attached exhibits to this as well. But I will read the email, which is, greetings, Commissioners and staff. I hope 2024 brings a healthy and prosperous year for all. This public comment is in reference to Midshore Three landfill and its proposed location. Again, her name is Teresa Erhardt, and her backyard in Shrewsbury Farm looks directly at the location of the proposed landfill and borders the landfill acreage at an approximate distance of one thousand feet. Now that all the leaves are down, I can clearly see where the mound will grow right from our dining room windows. We don't understand how this landfill can be constructed and run for ten years without impacting many nearby homes in a multitude of environmental ways. As you know, we have done our research and we have pointed out the distance constraints written in both the prior and current SWM plans. We have been told that these plans don't apply to the landfill parcel identified thirty-plus years ago and that the wording in these plans have caused quote-unquote irreperative interpretive confusion. We have email documentation written on December sixth, 2021, by the Queen Anne's County Commissioner Mann and the Planning and Zoning Director, Mordock, Exhibit A. As Mordock's email indicates, that on August seventeenth of 2021, there was a multi-department meeting at DWP to discuss the landfill. In her email, she discusses notes that she took, that she took at this meeting. She stated that the site would be owned by MES and therefore it would be exempt from our swamp, quote-unquote, SWMP, not swamp, apologize. Then she discusses the need for, quote, consistency statement to reconcile the current SWMP and notes that Chapter three and Chapter four are in question. She also notes that a consistency finding is needed for the state application. So no one note, it was discussed that the landfill would not need to adhere to the current SWMP, but further discussion referred to it being needed more from MDE. She also stated that a public service waiver should be sought and granted. This has never been done. I am looking for all the commissioners to go back and do their own research. Multiple emails have been sent to all commissioners specifying the exact document, name, section, page, pointing to the language that supports our rights to question the legality of the proposed landfill location and the permitting process. I am hoping that this research will be done prior to our roundtable meeting with our group of concerned citizens. If the location purchased in nineteen ninety-one does not need to adhere to current rules and regulations as stated in response to our questions, why then was a consistency letter dated October seventeenth, 2022 given to MDE? Phase two funding has been approved. This is a serious waste of taxpayers' money, and the truth needs to be acknowledged that a new location needs to be found. Thank you. And that is all we have for email.
Okay, now we'll close press and public comment.
All right, thank you, Chris. Okay, Commissioners, we can move into our presentations portion of this evening's agenda. So if you want to turn to tab number six, first up, we have Melinda Ray, Character Counts. She's going to provide an update, and also she has the Character Counts Spotlight for January.
I'll be new here, everyone.
Can you hear?
I am alone tonight. Wayne sends his regards, but he wasn't able to make it, so. So going into 2024, I was really excited with everything that Character Counts was able to accomplish last year, and instead of me telling you everything we accomplished last year, I made a video.
That's great, all right. Ready for it?
Mm-hmm.
Well, that won't do it. Give me two seconds here. There we go.
Well, lovely.
No, 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 hold on. That's weird.
Or a snippet.
Just got to see me and Catherine.
We're going to download that and find out why it's doing that. It must be something to do with the outage that we had. Here we go. Let me open this now. There we go. Media player. All right.
There's a lot of the things that we were able to accomplish last year, but I wanted to give you an update on where we're at right now as well. As of today, it kind of teeters between like ninety-eight and a hundred, but as of today, we have coaches in a hundred percent of our K through five classrooms. And starting this month, we will be in all four middle schools. Centerville Middle, we worked out the logistics, so we will now have coaches in all four of the middle schools, so we're really excited about that. We also just posted today on our socials that we're going to be doing school staff recognitions. So if a member of the community, I would put out there, if you see a school staff member who is deserving of a recognition of some sort, please let us know and nominate them. You can find the link for that on the socials today, but it will also be on the website, www PeopleOfCharacter.org. And we want any school staff member, this is not limited to just teachers. There's lots of people that make those schools run and serve our students, and we want to recognize all of them. The, you noticed we gave the Fay Lister Scholarship to Catherine Alvaranga last year. That is going to be going live, and I'm also very excited. The $500 scholarship is always sponsored by the Centerville Rotary, and we were able to get the Ken Island Rotary to match that, so we will have two $500 scholarships this year. We'll have one at each high school, so we're really excited, and that will go live very soon. And I think that's all I had for you guys.
I think it would pretty sick to say that if Jackie Carter was with us today, she would be extremely happy.
Wouldn't she? We're doing great things. We're very excited about the growth that we've had, even just in the past year. We, as of this morning, I was counting, I think we have, it's like a hundred and eight or a hundred and nine volunteers with our program right now. And I have a list of people that I, crazily enough, who want to volunteer, and I don't have a place for. So it's, it's exciting to be able to tell people, thank you for calling, but I have nowhere to put you because we have all of our classrooms full. So it's very exciting.
What about, what about the possibility of doubling up? So if somebody...
We do have some.
So you have some that double up, right?
Yeah, we sure do. We sure do.
So coaches?
Yeah. And so if, so, you know, the sub, the coach is familiar with the class because they attend, and then if something happens and that, that, this town coach can't be there, you have somebody who can step in?
Yeah, that's a great idea.
Put you in the classroom.
Right now, I'm, I keep a list, so if a coach has to back out for whatever reason and can't finish the year, I have a list of people that I can contact and, and plug them in, so. But it's been, it's been a great, I, let's see, April will be my one year, so it's been a lot of fun.
Standing.
Do you want to say anything about the spotlight for January?
I'm super excited about this month's spotlight. I can't wait for you guys to read it because I, and I had invited the spotlight honoree, the president, to be here tonight. He's unable to join us tonight, but he should be tuning in. I told him to make sure he's watching.
Okay, very good. All right, yes?
Who's reading?
Oh, I thought you, I thought you...
You look like you were getting ready to read it.
No, 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 no.
I'm waiting with bated breath.
Yeah. Oh, my God. Jim's going to read it.
Yeah.
I don't like to ruin the surprise before you read the statement.
Okay.
The Character Counts pillar celebrated in January is fairness, and our honoree is the Canard Alumni Association in Centerville. The Canard Alumni Association, a local nonprofit, was established to continue broad heritage, proud heritage of Canard High School, Queen Anne's County's first and only secondary school for African-Americans. Their goal is to be a stepping stone for youth in our community, engaging them through programs in education, cultural arts, and scholarship assistance. After purchasing the property known as the Old Canard High School in 2012 from Queen Anne's County for a dollar, the Canard Alumni Association began restoring, began the restoring, restoration process, renaming the building the Canard African-American Cultural Heritage Center. According to Clayton Washington, the association's current president, "Our goal is to share the history of African-Americans in Queen Anne's County and our achievements in contributing to the growth of the community." He added, "Canard is a safe space where all people can come and share their opinions through open communication and listening to others." The restored high school now houses a museum that provides a window into the rich history and heritage of African-American culture on Maryland's eastern shore. It also includes an African-American history library, which is open to the public on the first Saturday of each month from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. All Canard programs and events are open to all community members. With the help of members and the community at large, the Canard Alumni Association seeks to enable the old high school site to be a learning resource for generations to come. According to Mr. Washington, this is only achieved by maintaining an attitude of inclusiveness, not choosing one over another, and being fair to all. You can find out more about the Canard Alumni Association and the Canard African-American Cultural Center on the homepage of Queen Anne's County Character Council's website, www PeopleOfCharacter.com. So I, I actually toured that a couple of years ago, and I'll tell you what, it's absolutely amazing what they've done with the museum component, and I would encourage anybody to, to go check it out because it is absolutely amazing.
It's very cool, and in speaking to Mr. Washington when I was preparing for the nomination for this month, they're, they've got great ideas for, for where this is going to go in the future and how they want to expand, so I'm excited to see where they take the center because it is a very cool place to be.
It goes back to, it goes back to our, my first term when we were part of that administration that, that gave it to them for a dollar and, and toured it in the before, and then, of course, looking at it a couple of years ago at the after. You know, you take a look at those before and afters, and this is a classic example of, of hard work and commitment by an organization. And again, for the sake of repeating myself, I would encourage anybody to go take a look at it because it's amazing.
If I may add, I had the pleasure of getting a tour there. Commissioner Corcorino and I were at the celebration there, and at the encouragement of Mr. Washington, I took a tour, and I was really impressed with it. And the person who said the most, I mean, a lot of people did, is Mr. Fisher. So for our Queen Anne's County community, if you don't, if you haven't had a chance to go through the museum, it's well worth it, and Mr. Fisher is quite an inspiration for all of us from Queen Anne's County.
Great work.
Yeah, I agree. Thank you, gentlemen. Happy New Year.
You too.
Thank you, Melinda.
Yeah.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening. Okay, Commissioners, our... Okay, Commissioners, our, our second presentation for this evening is Mr. Eric Johnson. And we also have Joe Candell, the board president of VAMSA.
Thank you. I thought it was just going to be me. I was trying to figure out you two, the short story.
I was going to say, Eric, you look really good.
Yeah, we had some work done.
Excuse me. Excuse me.
Okay, thank you so much.
And we have, this is in your books, item two under tab six, and it's also up on the big screen here as well, so please take it away.
Well, before we do these slides, I'd like to tell you that our plan is that will we, the Resource Center will be open full time in the month of February. And that we hired a, an assist, another grant writing company in Eastern called EHS. I believe they do the county's work, and they come very well qualified. So we're going to get additional help raising funds from them in addition to what Maggie is doing at present. So that's good news for us.
Sure.
All right, so I was going to have Lee Ellingson here with us this evening, but the wind got the better of her before we crossed the Kent Narrows, and I'm lucky I made it across it. So Lee is joining us as our Director of Operations, and she has most recently spent 24 years working as a high-level assistant to Rosalynn Carter with the Carter Foundation. So she has a lot of history and talent when it comes to fundraising agencies and that sort of thing, so we are very excited to have her come on. And her main task in the beginning is going to be launching our volunteer efforts. So she is right now coordinating all of the volunteers, making sure they get their background checks, and they are getting trained properly so that we can be open full time and begin to do a large amount of outreach.
Just occurred to me, there might be some people watching that don't have a clue what VAMSA is. So you might want to.
Go back and start from the beginning?
Well, just a little bit, just a little brief one, and then.
This is why Eric does this, and not me. So VAMSA stands for Veteran Military Support Alliance, and we are located down at the Bay Bridge Marina, for those that don't know. And we serve veterans, the military, their families, and caregivers in any aspect that they would need, whether it be benefits and claims assistance, stress management. We offer peer support groups. We're the only one, I believe, in the state, if not larger area, that has a psychiatrist facilitated combat PTSD support group. And again, that is peer-run, but psychiatry, psychiatrist facilitated. So that is VAMSA.
Is there a website that you want to share real quick?
Thank you for the plug, yes. It's vamsa.us, so V-A-M-S-A dot U-S. And then this is just, this is a copy of the State of the State that we presented to the board, and we are happy to present it here again to you, gentlemen. So please have patience with me because this is Eric's job. We do have the Board of Directors. This is just sort of our chain of command, as you can see, and you've noticed that we have Lee on as the deputy director, and she will be in charge of the volunteers. The next page is, this is who we have seen over the past year, and that is the different types of clients. We have about 3%, excuse me, and I'm not going to read the whole thing. You guys can read through this at your perusal, for, that are very complex and labor-intensive. They require 50 hours or more per client in order to get a handle on what their needs are and in order for us to, to help them and find out all the little pieces of what they need and make sure that they're getting what they deserve. Then we go back to the complex and labor moderate, simple, and then simple and labor minimal. So the interesting thing is, is 50% of our clients right now are in the 16, basically 15 to 30 hours of interaction. And so that's really going to help us when we go full time, having these volunteers trained up so that it's not, at this point, mostly Eric and Lee and myself doing it in addition to fundraising and grants and stuff. So that's really going to help us. Do you guys have any questions about the client makeup page before I move on? Okay. The next page is things that we have been involved with, and of course, all of our efforts are focused on suicide prevention for the veteran and military. We have had the privilege and honor of having five veteran and one caregiver suicide interventions that have been successful so far this year in 2023. We're very proud of that, and it has a lot to do with the peer support that we offer, the nonjudgmental area that when the veterans come in, whether it be the coffee meetups or into our office, they really feel safe and open up, and so we're able to jump in and help them. We are starting a gunlock program. I just had a call today with Midshore Behavioral Health. They are going to be providing us with gunlocks in order to provide them to the veterans, just adding another safety measure for when someone may be hurting and unable to, you know, basically say, I don't want to do this. Having a gunlock on will just add an extra step and give them pause to cause, cause to pause. There we go. Flip it. We've had crisis calls, as I mentioned, our Combat PTSD Group. We also launched a spouse and caregiver support group, and that's, that's done wonderful. We have three spouses and caregivers that have taken part, are taking advantage of our massage therapy sessions, and we have also done holistic therapies. As I mentioned, the coffee meetups, those are once a week at the Dunkin' Donuts here in Centerville. And we have had 600-plus information and referrals and warm handoffs for every kind of service that they might need. And we are working with two legions and one VFW, so we have access to over 400 members in the area. Not just Queen Anne's County. And as we move forward with the volunteers, we're also going to reach out to the other five midshore counties and see how we can better support them as well. And then claims, claim support, we have had 19 veterans that we've had the privilege of working with for their compensation claims, and we have one veteran who has, as far as I know, has been approved for the Tunnels to Tower grant in order to get a home that he will be able to recover in and live in his most independent life. Do you guys have any questions on that page?
Just to, I know that, that the coffee meetup, you guys were trying to get a second, to get a larger location, and, and, and I think it was Fred McNeil and some folks tried to reach out at the YMCA. How's that going?
I have not heard that, but what, I have not heard back on that, but I can write that down.
Because I, I, I went and spoke to the, to the manager of the YMCA. She seemed to be very receptive of the idea, even showed me some of the, the meeting spaces that could be used.
Okay.
On that Monday. And then to take a step further, the possibility of, of some exercise programs that they can do after their, their Monday morning coffee. So I would continue to follow up with her out there at the YMCA.
I will do that.
Because I think they're eager to get involved.
Absolutely. That's wonderful. Thank you so much. And I still have yet to see the new facility. I'm, I use the one in Kent because that's, that's my hometown, but it looks impressive. All right, any other questions on that page?
Just a heads up that we'll need coffee if we're going to meet in the Y.
Yes. Or maybe we'll do juice or something.
There you go.
All right, so for 2024, as Joe mentioned, we are going to be open full time, Monday through Friday. The hours will be posted as we get closer to February and work with our volunteers to sort of get that schedule down, and we will have some weekend hours as well and evening hours, because we all know that if people are working during the same hours we're working, how are they going to utilize our services? And we still have the 911 and the 988 for the mobile and the hotline crisis. And we are going to be expanding our support programs. Again, the PTSD group is going to be grown and possibly adding another location. Programs for teens and children, we're going to be starting that this year. And as you can imagine, there's a lot of, you know, logistics that will go into that, especially working with, you know, behavioral health professionals. So we're looking at talking to local providers that we might be able to host them, and they would be coming in to facilitate. Zoom-enabled groups whenever possible. As you know, transportation's a, a problem, and when you're not feeling well, you really don't want to go somewhere to be with other people. So people attending these meetings from the comfort of their home and the safety of their couch is very important because it allows them to participate. We're going to be launching Project Healing Waters at the Bay Bridge Marina, and that's where we get the opportunity to take veterans and their families out for fishing or just a sunset cruise, building a sense of community and having a good time, because why not? We're on the bay. And, excuse me, expanding strength in our partnerships. We're working with the Center for the Arts for Military or Veteran-centric Programs just right down the street, and we have referrals to Talisman Therapeutic Riding for Equine Therapy, that sort of thing. I know there's a few other providers on the shore that have also shown interest and very targeted suicide prevention initiatives with the local legions, VFWs, and other agencies. And again, that was one of the meetings that I just had today. Anyone have?
I think Eric would be very proud of you.
Oh, yeah, he, he's, he owes me big for this. But the big news is we're going to be open full time, and we just want to thank you, gentlemen, for, and ladies, for always having us in to be able to provide an update and for your continued support and interest.
Keep it up. Keep going forward.
Thank you very much.
Maggie, this is Lee.
Hi.
She snuck in. She snuck in.
So I was, if you, if anyone has any questions about me, Maggie did an excellent job introducing me, but if anyone had any questions, I'm available to answer them.
Give her the hard questions.
I don't know if we have any hard questions, but, but welcome aboard, Lee, and, and we're excited that you're going to be helping out and, and the expertise and the background that you bring to the philanthropic efforts that it's going to take to really get this thing moving in the right direction and get help out to as many people as we can. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'm very excited to be involved with this organization. It allows me to bring my expertise in mental health and caregiving to this important work and allows me to move back to my home state of Maryland. And I am enjoying working with Eric and Maggie and the volunteers that have entered the farm and all of the board members. And I was at the dedication of the Vietnam Veterans Memorial at Libby's, so I even had a chance to meet some commissioners. I'm really looking forward to getting and meeting more of you in person when the weather is not too hostile.
Yes. Excellent. Well, thank you very much. Appreciate it.
You're welcome. Take care.
Yeah.
All right, Commissioners, moving on, we have one item under the legislation this evening. So if you want to turn to tab number seven, item one, this is the consideration of a Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan Amendment 11-20. This is from the public hearing we held back on Tuesday, November 28th, to discuss the town of Centerville's proposal to expand their wastewater treatment plant and to increase from roughly 500,000 gallons per day to 1 million gallons per day and to relocate the effluent outfall into the Corsica River. So that is the first item. And the second item was the Northwest Chester Water Main Extension, and this was to add additional properties to the Chester Water Service Area to those added via the, an earlier amendment to, to provide water service to the constructed water main along Chester, in Chester, along Main Street in Stevensville. We certainly can.
I'm going to do it as a single motion, but it'll have two parts to it. Does that work?
Person it.
Yeah, it can be considered as, I mean.
It's going to be attached to the original motion, so it's got to be part of it.
Yeah, you can't, right.
It can't be separated.
Understood.
That's fine.
I'm going to refer to the town, Centerville, request an increase of overall wastewater treatment capacity by 458,000, from 542,000 gallons per day to 1 million gallons per day. I move to also further move to require the town to return to end the Comprehensive Water and Sewers Plan once a more definitive plan has been tentatively approved by MDE on the means of disposal of 458,000 additional gallons of new capacity effluent.
Second.
We have a motion as second. Any discussion on this item?
So what this does is this gets the process to where all the questions that everybody has been asking us, we can get answers to. Quite frankly, we will not get any answers from MDE because the process died right here on the vine, and I, I want to see what, what the outfall's going to be. I, I believe that the outfall is going to wind up in the Chester River, which may do a complete reset as far as looking at what is physically possible with the expansion. And until we move this to the next level, unfortunately, this is kind of like passing the ACA. We've got to sign this bill to find out what's in it. So I want to move it forward, and I think, I think it's the right thing to do now so we can get the answers we're looking for, because right now, we're not going to get any answers till we do, so.
Agree.
Any other discussion?
I just wanted to, you know, reiterate what you just said, that this is, this, my vote is not to say this is 100% go. This is to allow MDE to look into what it's going to put into the river, where I would prefer more farmland, understanding that they can't do it year-round, meaning because the farmland can't have spray irrigation in the winter months, understandably. So I just wanted to mention that.
All right. Any other discussion? Seeing none, we're going to take a vote on this. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Are you opposed?
Patrick, you're an aye?
Yeah.
Okay. Four zero.
All right, and I'm going to further move to approve the amended Chester Water Service Area map to include tax map 57, parcels 143 and 356.
Second.
We have a motion as second on this item. Any discussion? This is the new water line that runs from Castle Marina, basically all the way back to.
Shopping Center Road.
Shopping Center Road servicing all those businesses along that route and a couple of these apartment complexes. So if there's no further discussion, all those in favor of this item signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Four zero.
Thank you, Commissioners. All right, Commissioners, we can move into the Department of Public Works. They have three action items for your consideration this evening, actually, two action items. The first is informational, and that is item one on tab two, page one. And this is to update the board that the Queen Anne's County Board of Education approved the central office building construction contract to construct a new administration office over on Vinsett Street by the county complex and the YMCA. The bids ranged from 15.8 to 24.3 million, and the board awarded the construction contract to the low bidder Doyle Construction of Rockville, Maryland on January 3rd. And a groundbreaking ceremony is scheduled for Thursday, February 22nd at 3:30 p.m. on that project. So we're excited. The bids came in under budget, and that's finally moving forward to construction.
So, Todd, that's what, roughly 4.3 under, because the last one we got was like close to 20, right?
Yeah, I think the budget was.
Last estimate that they brought us was close to 20, so.
Yep.
That's good.
That's good news.
Yeah. That is real good news.
There was, I think, I'll have it here, a total of eight bidders, I believe, so really good turnout on that, 10, 10 bidders. Thank you, Commissioner. And good turnout on that, so we're glad to have, have good competitive bids on them, on the project. So looking forward to that construction. Okay, any other questions on that? Commissioners. Okay, item number two on pages two through nine is the systematic replacement of fleet equipment for the roads board, tractor mowers. But before we do that, let's, can we convene as the roads board, please?
Make a motion to convene as roads board?
All those in favor?
Aye.
There we go.
Aye.
Okay, all right. I'll let, Shane, you want to brief the Commissioners on this, your tractor mower bids, please? Want to make a motion first on those, or?
I move to purchase two John Deere 5105M utility tractors with Tiger mowers from Atlantic Tractor of Queen Anne, Maryland, in the amount of $282,344.34 via the Sourcewell Contract
Yes.
Very good.
Second, I think.
Motion is second. Okay, discussion. These are some expensive mowers.
Very expensive mowers.
So is this a systematic replacement, or?
It is.
Systematic replacement of two tractors, and as that, we'll be getting rid of two tractors through Gov.
Oh, are they?
I believe they are 20 and 26 years old with.
What's a normal life on one of them, Shane?
Did you say that again?
What's a normal life on one of those?
They typically get 20 years out of, out of something like that.
That's pretty average.
It gets funneled down. At first, it's out in, in the fleet, working during the summer every day, and then it can go down to a construction crew and be on a construction site pulling a rake or something, a scrape or something like that, and gets used less and less as it gets older.
Got you. And I'm sure that winged mowers are what drives the price up, right?
Mowers are just about as expensive as the tractors.
I was going to say, they're.
Yeah, it's the best, it's the back mower and a side mower.
Okay.
But in this particular year, they're a little more expensive because that model is, the model we normally buy is, is sort of discontinued. You have to get four-wheel drive now, four by four. So that's, that's the little bump in price.
Got you.
Shane, would we save a little bit of money directly to the manufacturers?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Would we save directly to John Deere instead of going through a third party?
Yeah, you can't go straight to them. You have to go through either a dealer or, in this case, Sourcewell, which is a government pricing. Most manufacturers, John Deere does have its own separate government-
Its government prices are different than your local prices?
Uh, Sourcewell's been the best price we've gotten on equipment from John Deere.
Thank you.
Do you see any, just out of curiosity, I understand the state, SHA, is not going to be doing any mowing. So they might do it once a year.
Call it grass, call it government.
Yeah. Do you see any situation in any of our corridor roads, or you would say, hmm, we might have to cut that just for safety and vision, or no, we'll call the state?
Their grass is mostly contracted out now. So if we get complaints from citizens on a road and they don't know it's a state road, we forward those along, and they typically get, do get cut. But they do a lot of meadow restoration in areas, so they don't have to mow as much.
But it's, but I, but to that point, yes. In North County, on the state roads, yes, because there, you get a lot of blind corners if they don't trim it back. Absolutely.
Yeah, we, we've had good luck working with our colleagues at SHA for those kind of safety needs.
Right.
We will, we, as Shane mentioned, we'll, we'll make sure we-
But to Jim's point, if they start cutting corners, and that's one of the corners they cut.
You know, the mowing's going to be cut way back, and the trash pickup, too, so.
Especially for-
Looking at what we have, you know, you just hate to see it look, I don't know, trashy. But anyways, okay. Any other discussion? All right. Seeing none, we're, the, the motion was to purchase two John Deere 5105M utility tractors with Tiger mowers from Atlantic Tractor of Queen Anne, Maryland, in the amount of $282,340.34 via the Sourcewell Contract number 082923-DAC PG1P CG70. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Thank you, commissioners. That's all we have for the roads board. If you had any other questions?
Just real quick, just for public knowledge, when we systematically replace old pieces of equipment, just kind of share with, what, what happens to that old equipment?
Predominantly, most of it goes on GovDeals.com.
Goes where?
GovDeals.
GovDeals.com.
It's a website, and a lot of municipalities and counties sell their equipment on there.
Okay.
You find a lot of stuff.
Okay, so there, there, there's, we, we sell what we're not going to be using anymore and, and do regain some revenue.
Sometimes we keep and we, we scavenge parts off of it as long as we can. If it's an older piece, it's harder to get parts for, we'll do that. Or, like I said, we'll funnel it down to a minimal job that's only used a couple of times a year, but you need that piece. But GovDeals is very effective.
Okay.
Does that go back into your own budget?
Yes. It goes back to the general fund. Thank you.
Okay, then, our next item is for the sanitary commission. So if you want to convene as the sanitary commission, please.
Motion to convene as sanitary.
Second.
On better?
Aye.
All right. Item three on page 10 is the Southern Kent Island Phase Four Community Maines Construction Bid. So bids were received for Phase Four of the Community Maines to service Chesapeake Estates, Sunnyalla, Kent, Mata Peak Estates, and the Bat's Neck area. We have three bids ranging from 1.7 million to 2 million 30,000. And I believe we want to award that to the low bidder, ECM Corporation of Annapolis, so. Can I get a motion on that?
I move that we conditionally award the construction bid for the Southern Kent Island Phase Four Community Maines installation to ECM Corporation in the amount of 1,744,450, with the condition being the review and approval of the bid by the Maryland Department of the Environment, and also authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the agreement once any necessary submittals and approvals are in place.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Alan, how are we doing on the budgetary? I mean, obviously with all this stuff going up, how did this kind of rate with where we were, like, on the other phases?
We started with the budget of $50 million to get it done, and I don't think we're going to spend quite that. So given the, where we started in 2016, and COVID, and supply chain, and everything else, I think we're doing quite well.
Good, good. Excellent.
I, I, I read your little information sheet here, and I'm just curious, the unbalanced bid, how, so is that not counted in towards their bid?
Yes, absolutely.
So why, I don't understand why the Schumer would complain then, because?
Well, I mean, for one reason, they've, they've lost a lot of work to ECM over the years, so they're a little angry at them began with, so. I mean, I guess, I guess their point of being on balance, there's no way in this, in the world you're going to spend that kind of money on traffic control and it's for-
But is that, is that a line item that's kept separate that?
Yes, it's a separate line item.
So that, that just comes to, you know, it flows through them, so they get a charge from that company that does the traffic control and?
They usually do it themselves. I mean, there's a little bit of state road there, and they'll probably, they may sub that out to-
Flag or force for somebody like that.
I mean, that's a heck of a difference, 225,000 versus 15,500.
Schumer's number's probably the valid number for the traffic control. I called ECM when I first got their bid, and I said, you know, what, what's this about? And basically, they said, ask whoever we split our contingency. Okay, there's nothing to prohibit them to do it that way. And as I mentioned, Teal did much the same thing, the third bidder, they put 135,000 for traffic control.
And now this goes to the state for their approval, correct?
Yeah. But when they, when they break out the schedule of values, they're going to have to, they'll peel that back and put it under a contingency, you don't think? Or you think they'll keep it there?
Always, contract documents are set up as, if they get 10% of the job done in one month, they get 10% of their traffic control.
Okay. Gotcha.
Line item is going to stay at that value and-
But I guess, I guess what I'm asking is, is the, the amount of the bid, does, does that include these?
Yes.
Okay, so it's already in there?
Oh, yes.
It's just how they broke it out on the line items, that's why.
Why would they complain about it? That's what I'm saying. If it's, their number's still lower than theirs, I don't understand what-
I can't explain their rationale either.
Okay. All right, I thought that that was a separate item, and they're adding it in after the fact.
I don't know.
Okay, okay, very good. All right, well, like I said, and this is Phase Four, this is the last phase.
Final phase.
Final phase. Yeah, where no man has ever gone before. Here we are.
Here we are.
Right, yeah. All right.
Hopefully, where no man has to go again.
That's exactly right. Well, we're going to have to go sooner or later, yeah, so. So we're, the vote is on that we are conditionally awarding the construction bid of the Southern Kent Island Phase Four Community Maines installation to ECM Corporation in the amount of 1,744,450, with the condition being the review and approval of this bid by the Maryland Department of the Environment, and also I authorize the Director of Public Works to execute the agreement once any necessary submittals and approvals are in place. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. So Alan, you know, getting back to Jack's question, back in 2016, we, you know, you, your staff and team put the numbers together for all this, and we are right at budget, just under budget, or over?
I think we're probably a little under.
Really?
Outstanding.
I mean, we shot high.
Well, I mean, here we are, we're, we're seven, seven plus years later, and we're right on target and-
Plus the supply chain issues and the cost increases that were absorbed from that? That's crazy.
That's what I'm saying, that's, thank you.
From a financing point of view, I mean, we didn't anticipate that those lots in the Phase One sell on like hotcakes either, so that helps us out on the financing.
That helped you recover some of that quicker. Yep.
Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, guys.
All right, commissioners, we can move into our action items for this evening. We've got 10 action items.
What they just asked for pale in comparison.
Want to look into tab number two, starting in tab number two.
Yeah. Motion to adjourn?
Poor Steve.
Excuse me, tab number three, tab three. The first group of action items this evening are for our Parks and Recreation Department, so again, tab number three. Item one is a equipment acquisition for a Kubota four-wheel-drive tractor from Huber Inc. in Middletown, Delaware, for $36,800, using the government discount pricing, which would replace a 1985 unit in the Parks Department.
All right, let's the games begin. I move to authorize Department of Parks and Recreation to purchase one Kubota four-wheel-drive tractor from Huber Incorporated of Middletown, Delaware, for $36,800.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Commissioners?
There's one.
Item number two on pages five through eight is the recommendation for a purchase of a new batwing mower, Woods Batwing Mower, from, also from Huber of Middletown, Delaware, for $24,950, using the same government discount pricing schedule, this replacement for a 20, or 2006 batwing mower.
I move to authorize Department of Parks and Rec to purchase one Woods model batwing mower from Huber Inc. of Middletown, Delaware, for $24,950.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Discussion on this item. This is just the type you tow. This is-
Correct. That's why you need the tractor for the-
Oh, so the first item was?
Just the tractor.
Okay, and this hooks to it, okay. They're sold to you together as one piece?
We thought it'd be better to go ahead and break it out, because that's how it was suggested in our budget.
Oh, okay, okay.
That way you can see specifically where we purchased.
So, so do we not have any Sourcewell contracts for any of this?
No, but this is actually a better price than Sourcewell.
Good. So there's your answer to your question, Patrick. They found it cheaper than Sourcewell.
That's what I like to hear in your-
And, and this, this is replacing the existing one, which is, how's the, the existing one look like this? Because I thought they were all one-piece. At one point, there was one unit with three blades underneath.
It looks like that. It's an exact replacement.
So now they're separating each one individually?
Right, and we've got other recent purchases of a batwing mower, so now everything is consistent across the board. And that's one of the things that we're trying to do, is make sure that we have one type of, you know, chinery for each thing, so it's easier to fix and get pieces.
So one of my first jobs was, was cutting grass at Fort Mead, the firing ranges.
Last year?
And I pulled one of the, I pulled a batwing. Yeah, 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 yeah.
Batwing.
Fond memories.
Now you drive the self-mower.
It's like 12 feet, one pass, like. Of course, when you're doing the firing range, you know where you never qualify?
That's right. That's right. You know it.
I said never qualified. Okay, that's all I have.
We already voted on it, so that's good.
Okay. Okay, next item?
Yes, sir.
I move to authorize Department of Parks and Rec to purchase one 2023 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 two-wheel-drive regular cab truck from Hertrick Fleet Services Incorporated of Milford, Delaware, for $29,989.
So, just real quick, second, second. So tell us, what, what are we using the truck for?
Truck for? It's a replacement vehicle for one of our vehicles up at Terrapin. We've already tried to replace the motor.
It's running on bubble gum and duct tape?
Right.
Okay.
And then the wiring would go bad, and then it'd sit for a couple of days, and it would start up, and we've gone back and forth, so we've been dumping money into it, trying to-
Okay.
-keep it alive. So now we've finally deadlined it.
Okay. Perfect.
No Fords, huh? Chevy. All right, like I said, this vote is on to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to purchase one 2023 Chevrolet Silverado 1500 two-wheel-drive regular cab truck from Hertrick Fleet Services Incorporated of Milford, Delaware, for $29,989. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
That's when we did use a buying agreement, Howard County's, looks like.
Uh, yes.
Having just bought a used pickup truck, Mr. Director, that's a pretty good price.
Yes. We were, we were fortunate, we got a call from the sales rep. It's actually on the lot, Howard County had somebody, they decided not to purchase it, so we got it for basically a fire sale.
Sweet.
Okay, I mean, thank you.
Okay, that's right. All right, moving on. Item number four on pages 14 through 19 is a dump truck body replacement purchase.
Hold on, hold on.
Hold on, we got one more before that.
Item number four.
It is number four.
It is four.
Number four is?
Oh, the dump truck, yeah.
Yeah, the dump truck.
Dump body.
It's the dump body.
I thought you said 14 through 19.
Well, that, on pages 14 through 19, excuse me, yeah. This is the dump truck body replacement for a 2013 Ford.
I move to authorize Department of Parks and Rec to contract Dehanna of Baltimore, Maryland, to remove and replace the dump body of a 2013 Ford F-450 dump truck for the amount of $22,650.
Second.
Any discussion? That's a good price. That F-450, though, only goes, you carry two tons.
Again, it's just for the, for the dump body itself.
I'm saying, because that's what state police are all over now, pulling over the, my trucks get pulled over all the time. And I know F-450s with that dump body on there, you're about two tons. Truck, you can put four tons on there without any problem at all, but their, your ticket's going to be hefty. Any other discussion?
No.
No? All those in favor signify by saying aye then.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
All right, thank you, commissioners. Item number five is another equipment purchase for zero-turn gasoline-powered motors on pages 20 through 23. This is for four 2023 zero-turn gas mowers from Preston Powersports in Easton for $55,984, also using the government discount pricing.
I move to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to purchase four 2023 zero-turn gas mowers from Preston Powersports in Easton, Maryland, for the price of $55,984. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this?
Oh, yeah.
I, I just got a question on brand. I, I notice you're going with Toro. They seem to be, I mean, from my experience, aren't they the Cadillacs? Because they're the golf course mowers?
But they're also pretty much a standard park, in, in many operations, park operations is the standard purchase. You know, again, one of the things that we've done is, we had John Deere, we've had Kubota, and we had this one come out and demo the mowers for the guys, and let the guys ride it and see which ones they prefer, let the mechanic take a look at it, see what we have and see what is compatible. So this was the overwhelming responsibility, or comfortable with what we have going, and again, getting that consistency across the board. Because we don't want, we don't want to get something that our guys think is insufficient, you know? And then we get that, that comment like, you know, you never ask us. Well, if you ask us, we get their opinion and we, you know, we purchase what they want, you know, it goes a long way.
But to the consist, consistency end, that's kind of what I'm saying, is if we've been John Deere, now we can't scrap John Deeres because we're buying Toro, doesn't it make sense? It's the Southwest Airlines model, buy all three, 737s, and then you have the same parts and pieces for every airplane.
You know, we've got, we've got both. We do have both. I mean, we're not all strictly one. I think last year, we got a couple of John Deere mowers. These were other replacement ones, so we've got a nice, you know, a nice balance.
Not to mention the 2004, 5, 6, and 7, you know, replacement parts.
I'm not judging now, I'm just judging, should we stick with one manufacturer so that the parts are?
Right, I'm just saying, so, you know, if you, if you have a 20-year-old Toro, it doesn't mean that that part's going to be easy to find. I don't know. Anyways, so we're moved to authorize the Department of Parks-
I think he still has questions.
Yeah, I beat this up pretty good.
Fire weapon.
But can, can we zoom in? Can you zoom in on that?
Wait, wait, just-
But we're challenging the IT department.
Turn it around, there's a camera right here.
So, so I, I too had some initial concerns in reviewing this purchase of these zero-turn radius, made some phone calls to some dealerships, but I have to tell you that I'm absolutely satisfied, because this has the 74-inch cutting deck, it has the safety roll bar, it has the larger motor. So in, in doing my research, my, my fiscal responsibility to the taxpayers' dollars, this is actually a good price for these. So Steve, thank you very much. And I might add, while we're doing this real quick, is our crews between our schools and parks cut over 2,000 acres, is that right? 2,000 acres of grass. And so the equipment has to be durable.
Is that a mowing, a year?
That's each year, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Each year. So it's, it's, the equipment's got to be durable, it's got to be strong, and it's got to be able to run every day.
Nothing runs like a deer.
Anyway, so thank you for satisfying all my questions.
Is that a beat up?
Look at my notes. Look at that.
You didn't even ask any questions.
What kind of notes are those?
They're copious.
Hold on, we haven't finished, we haven't finished this one yet.
That was technically a comment, Phil. It wasn't a question.
Hold on, we, we haven't voted on this one yet.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So we're moved to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation- Recreation to purchase four 2023 zero-turn gas mowers from Preston Powersports in Easton, Maryland for $55,984. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Four zip. There you go. Now you go, Todd.
Okay, excuse me, yeah. Item number six on pages 24 through 27 is a request to purchase a 2023 zero-turn diesel mower, also from Preston Powersports, in the amount of $19,375.81, using the same government discount pricing. And this will replace a John Deere zero-turn mower.
I moved to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to purchase one 2023 zero-turn diesel, diesel mower from Preston Powersports in Easton, Maryland for
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Yes. So, let's zoom back in on this unit. Looks very similar to the previous Toros that we purchased.
So how are they gonna stop putting regular gas in it if it looks-
So, understand, though, folks, why you're staying yourself back home, watching this Commissioners meeting on the edge of your seat, why is individual cost for the previous ones about $14,000, this is $19,000? Diesel.
But diesel fuel costs more than-
That's the answer to your question, folks at home. It's a diesel unit. That's why it costs more. I did that research, too.
So if the fuel costs more, why would we buy diesel?
You need to ask him that question.
I thought he would have. I thought I'm giving him a softball here, but he wouldn't take it, so.
Probably they run longer.
It is about how they run, I mean, depending on where you're cutting. I mean, they're, the 70s that we got, we wanted them to be gas, because the revolutions is a lot better with a gas. The diesel wouldn't-
Karen is quick.
...give you a bit of a cut.
Gotcha.
And it's replacing the diesel for a diesel.
Really? I would've said okay to that, but, all righty. Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. All righty.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Over 2,000 acres annually. That's a lot of grass.
A lot of grass.
That's right.
All right.
Thank you, Steve.
I still have one more.
One more item for the Parks Department here this evening. Item number seven on pages 28 through 33. This is a recreation center feasibility study contract-
Oh, yeah.
-that the department is recommending to award to Barry Dunn for this project for $179,823. We did receive eight proposals. They were evaluated by the review, by a review panel and by the department, and Barry Dunn was the selected vendor for this feasibility study for that amount, for the, for the contract price.
I'm gonna make the motion, because I got a question. I moved to authorize Department of Parks and Recreation to award to Barry Dunn the contract for Recreation Center feasibility study in the amount of $179,823.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Yeah, so, so this wasn't low and responsible?
No.
So, how come?
If you don't mind, I'm gonna have Beryl come up. Beryl did an outstanding job of putting everything together, canvassing a focus group, and she has worked diligently on it, and I don't, I want to make sure that we do that question justice.
Yeah, this was a quality-based selection, RFP, RFQ-RFP consideration for the appropriate vendor, so it wasn't necessarily low bid, it was-
Good directors and supervisors surround themselves with smart people.
Right.
That's why Jim has me.
Wish I could do this.
I know.
Commissioner, your question was, why, why did we not just do a low bid, correct?
Well, no, I mean, we typically do low and responsible. I'm looking at, it's obviously it's a low bidder. Here's double. I'm just wondering, were they that irresponsible? I guess is my question.
The panel found that none of the proposals were irresponsible or non-responsive. We very clearly asked them to consider that, were there any that would be disqualified. And the answer to that was no. But they also took a very close look at all of the proposals in terms of the scope that we provided. And their determination was, after they did a numerical score, and we looked at a weighted scoring for that, and they also did a qualitative deliberation, their recommendation was that we consider three of eight proposals. That top tier of three proposals then was looked at by the department, and it was clear that from the numerical scoring and the recommendation that Barry Dunn was the best value for the county.
So, so one thing also, is when we had the review panel take a look at the bids, they didn't see the prices. They evaluated them strictly on what was proposed, what they sent in.
Oh.
And then the next step was bringing the, showing the prices, and then that's how we figured it out. So they could just, that was purely information for them, what the actual cost was that each proposer did for the bid. It didn't have really any bearing on the selection that we made. We kept price out of it. We didn't want the panel to be biased by seeing, you know, a low bidder and extremely high one, and say, well, that's the one, and that's the ones out, because they're way too high. We wanted it on quality itself.
And this, this contract does have a significant public outreach component, so we do want to get public input in the, in the process of how this is gonna look, where it's gonna be. And ironically, out of the three top selected proposals by the committee, Barry Dunn was the low bidder of the top three selected.
So, so there, I can promise you, there's some folks that are listening in, again, on the edge of their seats here for the Commissioners meeting. Just a quick, brief, what we're talking about here? What is this?
Project.
Project.
Thank you. This is a feasibility study that we are hoping to commission from a consulting firm to examine all of the issues surrounding a future community recreation center.
Community recreation center.
Indoor.
Indoor.
Basketball, pickleball, whatever kind of ball you want to throw around in there, and, you know, indoor space that we can use year-round.
That will be the county's first indoor recreation center.
One thing to consider is, we're probably one, if not the only Department of Parks and Recreation that doesn't have a facility to itself to run recreation programs. We're at the mercy of the schools for their scheduling, you know, with their special events, with, you know, the holidays, teacher professional days, with summer school. In the summertime, we can't get into school on Fridays because they still work on that four-day thing, so, four-day work week, so that throws us off with our summer programs. In the wintertime, you know, you've got, you know, Christmas break, closed for two weeks. You got Easter break, or, I'm sorry, spring break, that's closed for, for another week as well. You've got all these professional days that come up. You've got holiday events that come up, so we're pushed out of there. So it's really tough for, for our recreation staff to run a quality recreation program and, and put programs out there to the public without having a home. You know, we're, you know, we're-
Can you give us a, a brief, how many different sports are out there and how many people are participating? Because I heard basketball was in the hundreds.
In the hundreds?
Several hundred.
Several.
Basketball, I think this year is, I think about 800.
Yes.
Indoor soccer's about 600. You know, those are just programs that we run ourselves, just right off the bat. But you have summer camps as well. We try to run them in, you know, the three different areas of the county.
So now with this facility, I mean, so this feasibility study is gonna look at several things. Size, capacity, as well as location, and, okay. I say the bigger, the better.
Yeah, no, I agree with you.
Bigger, the better. I mean, can you imagine being able to hold a, a regional championship game and, and house 3,000 people to watch?
And, you know, going on that, that same topic there, let's say, for example, if it has multi-gymnasiums in there. You know, again, we rely on the schools. So, you know, we've got to have people spread out everywhere. If you had a site that had, you know, say, three or four full-court gymnasiums in there, you could house it right there. It's less dependency on the school, you know? We wanna, you know, we wanna kind of break away from there and have our own, you know, have our own space, you know? And it's also something that's needed, because we constantly hear, there's not a lot for people to do if they're not participating in an athletic team. So a community center would have, you know, you can have arts and crafts, you can have drop-in activities, you can have a game room, you know? These are all different things that can go into a, a functionally workable community center.
Well, it certainly- And Ms. Beryl, Director, thanks for all your hard work on it. Let's move it forward.
Roger that. So, Jack made, what did we vote, Mr. Jack?
Jack, Jack made the motion?
Yes.
I second it.
And?
Jack made the motion, so.
Patrick seconded.
Patrick seconded.
All right, so, and we are actually voting to authorize the Department of Parks and Recreation to award Barry Dunn the contract for the Recreation Center feasibility study in the amount of $179,823. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye? Four zip?
What do you see the search for the community?
The official kickoff to the project, Commissioner, will be in February, and the needs assessment and public engagement portion to really establish what the community is looking for will probably not begin until March.
You won't get your results till March? Is that what you said?
We will probably not begin the survey portion.
Okay. When do you plan, is it a year? How long is this?
It should be about almost 10 months.
Okay.
November, December.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you both, all right. Safe travels home. Hope you can get across that bridge. I don't know.
It's still closed, brother. Yep.
Hey, Commissioners, our next item is item number eight.
Yeah.
This is the Budget Amendment Policy and a Procurement Policy Update and Revision. It's on pages 34 through 55. These are our two policies, one for budget amendments and one for procurement. Our Spending Affordability Committee and our auditors have recommended approval of these adjustments and changes to these policies, which provide generally for higher administrative approval thresholds for these, for these two efforts. We have our Director-
I move to approve the presented changes to the Budget Amendment Policy, Policy Number 400-013, and the Procurement Policy, Policy 400-010, effective January 9, 2024.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Giving the keys away. FYI. Well, they already got our signatures anyway, on that little machine in there, so. All right.
Gave the keys away last year.
That's true. All right, no discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. There we go.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Jeffrey. Well done. All right, Commissioners, item number nine on pages 56 through 63 are a series of proposed ordinances that we would suggest, or request, that these be sent back to the Department Planning Commission for their review. The first one is ordinance number 2401. This is for non-water dependent structures on piers, and this would provide provisions to allow for non-water dependent structures on state or private wetlands within a critical area while meeting specific standards. Ordinance 2402- Excuse me.
An example of a non-water reliant structure?
Gas pump on a pier with a roof over it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
You're welcome. Ordinance 2402 is for camping cooperatives, and this is to add camping cooperatives as a permitted use and provide bulk standards to include minimum site areas. This is to address some floodplain issues in Beach Harbor, so we can hopefully continue to be in the community rating system for floodplain stormwater, or, excuse me, floodplain insurance rates. And then lastly, ordinance 2403, this is to amend provisions for piers to require the Board of Appeals approval for applications for extensions to be variances versus conditional uses.
Over 150 feet.
Over 150 feet, correct.
Just change in the process.
Change in the process. The variance is a little more challenging to, to get versus a conditional use, and a pier length is really a bulk standard, and any kind of bulk standard typically is a variance, not a conditional use. So it does provide some, some more scrutiny for those, those types of applications. So these, these three would go to the, back to the Planning Commission. They'll review those. There's a schedule in the draft memo, and then they'll come back to the Commissioners with recommendations and any adjustments to them.
These weren't citizen-sponsored, these were ours.
These were ours. These were based on, you know, there's some pending cases involving some of these issues, and clearly the camping cooperative and the piers, or the structures on piers. So we wanted to move these forward now versus waiting for the, the normal update.
These are broke out from the comprehensive on the bus.
There were some other ones that-
There are a few others. We're working on those as, as a next group. They'll be forthcoming.
I know where you're going with this, and I, I agree 100%. We need to break it out. We don't need one big bill. We need to get these things moving.
Yeah, we're moving, there's several others that are becoming in the next several meetings, yes.
I move to convey county ordinance number 24-01, 24-02, and 24-03 to the Planning Commission for investigation and recommendations.
Second.
A motion and a second. Any further discussion on this? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Okay. Yep, something you said.
Okay, all right.
Yes, yeah, it's good.
All right, thank you, Commissioners. Our final action item for this evening is a, a request from Susan O'Neill, the Executive Director of the Upper Shore Regional Council. They've requested sponsorship of their inclusion for primary liability insurance coverage through Legit, and this would start that process.
I move to execute the letter for sponsorship for the Upper Shore Regional Council that is needed to provide primary liability insurance from a local government insurance trust.
Second.
Motion and second. Any discussion?
Is that 600 bucks per county? The, the dues, premiums?
Yes.
Talking about for the Legit?
Yeah.
Yes. Yep.
Got it.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So moved.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. That is all of the action items ahead this evening.
You got any, uh?
Pressed public comment? I was like, yeah, no one here, no one virtual. We're good.
There you go, so we're saving you because there's nobody here. All right, roundtable.
Roundtable.
Patrick, we'll let you go first.
We go into a lot of funerals.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's been a really rough, uh, last month or so. Anyhow, uh, I'm glad to see the, the feasibility of the indoor recreation centers are finally moving forward. Well done. That's it, thanks.
All righty, Jack? Um, happy New Year. Slow time of the year for us Commissioners, so I'm, nothing really to, it's, it'll be heating up here next Wednesday.
Yeah.